Chairman of the Independent Sales Tax Oversight Committee, Mr. Mazurkowitz, I'm very much looking forward to your report. Thank you for being here today and thank you for your service through this committee.
My pleasure and my honor to serve on the committee and been recently selected as Chair. Board members, good afternoon. The ISOC Committee has met four times to date, three meetings and one workshop. We have worked with, we've made the decision going forward, we'll meet just once a quarter. But I want to talk about specifically where we are, where we've been to date. We have worked very closely with your staff, first of all, to have them help us share how public sector budgets and spends, which is a little new to some of the members on the committee. We went over that in depth at our workshop. We talked about what information we were interested in seeing and how and what format would make the most sense to us. And also, how it would be posted on the website so we could promote transparency to all of the citizens of Lee County since they were so gracious in supporting the sales tax. We decided at each meeting, we will take public input. We will review all the expenditures of the previous quarter. And we will look at all the proposed projects for the next quarter. We're not going to rework and redo the efforts of your construction committee. We are going to look solely at the projects as a whole and not delve into the individual budgets of each one. We look at the state revenue projections against what was budgeted. And I want to specifically address that. I'll address that a little bit later. At each meeting, we look at the appropriations in the specific categories of new construction, safety, maintenance, technology, and then debt service. I want to talk about debt service because it was brought to our attention in recent legislation in this past legislative session, laws passed that prevented you from using the sales tax for a revenue bond and limited you to expending those dollars or borrowing those dollars using only COPS as a financial instrument. That is an expensive, really the most expensive way to borrow money. And we, some of us had asked the staff to find out what the difference in cost would be from a revenue bond to using COPS. Just initially, we talked about the initial cost could be a million dollar savings if you went to revenue bonds instead of COPS. We will, I can personally attest the fact and commit to the fact that I will work with the local legislative delegation to share with them the impact of this recent legislation. That's a million dollars that could go into the categories we just talked about. And it's going into the cost of borrowing, which is just ridiculous. Sales tax for any other governing body in the state of Florida is a great pledge for a revenue bond. And much, it much less expensive to use. So we're going to be working on that. We will vote to approve at each meeting, all the appropriations for the upcoming quarter in the future. So we'll be prospectively voting to make a recommendation that we agree with the projected appropriations and expenditures. And then retroactively, we will look at how they were spent for each quarter. So each quarter, we'll have a little bit of history. And we'll have a little prospective look at the project. So we'll be looking at every dollar spent twice. I think that you will see that we are a board of type A personalities. We're not shy. Your, your staff has been amazing in addressing our concerns and determining, and first of all, educating us. And then after that, setting aside, our concern is as to how we will display the appropriate information in a manner that's easy to understand and easy to review. And the webpage that is set up for the sales tax, I can assure you is easily navigated by someone who's not high, high tech, because I can do it. And if I can do it, means just about anybody can do it. So it's, it's been, thus far, it's been a very good process. And with the addition of maybe helping you lobby for some changes in borrowing capacity going forward, I think that we will have a, a long and fruitful relationship with your staff, representing the citizens of Lee County and how those sales tax dollars are spent. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Fisher?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
So, thank you very much for your input. And then if you can help us, help you get the legislators to understand that as well, that would be a tremendous help.
Board member, I really believe at this particular juncture, it would probably be better for citizens to approach the local delegation rather than the board, for whatever reasons that may. And if we need your help, please be assured that we will be calling out for it.
Thank you.
So just to be clear on the revenue bonds versus the COPS, the 70-70 bill stated that we basically could only use COPS if we went over the cost per student. And, okay.
Ms. Morgan, did I say that you had a comment?
No, I have no comment.
Okay, so have any motions been made? Have you approved expenditures that have been?
We have. We approved the expenditures for the first quarter of last year. And we approved prospectively the projects that we're doing the first quarter, excuse me. We approved retrospectively the last quarter of last year, which was the first quarter we spent. And we approved the projects for the first quarter of this fiscal year, which we'll be looking at, at our next meeting.
I'm sorry to just sort of break this down into really simple to understand language, but to approve them, what do you mean by approve them?
We see the list. We, when we're looking at projects, we, our big focus is, staff shows us the necessity for them, shows us the reasoning behind them. And then we confirm that they are within the guidelines outlined in the resolution that went to the public to vote and support.
Excellent. Thank you. I want to point out or mention to the board that I did ask the superintendent yesterday if he could take this portion of the briefing meeting and put it on the Change for Change slash ISOC Committee part of our website so that the public can see your report without having to get through all of the other very exciting things that we are going to be talking about this afternoon. And when I express my gratitude to you, I really mean it. The fact that you're the Chair of this committee and the leadership, the community leadership that we have on this committee, you bring automatic credibility to what you say, as do the members of, of the committee. And I'm just incredibly grateful that you're willing to serve this community and, and show transparency in how this money is spent. So thank you very much for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a bunch of policies that have already been discussed on the agenda next. But I'm wondering, as I see our friends from FGCU here, I'm wondering if we could respect their time by moving the discussion about the Innovation School to be the next item on the agenda? Is everybody okay with that? We have consensus?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so then we will move to item D1, which is Innovation School. And we have many people joining us. And welcome to FGCU too. It's good to see you. Dr. Spiro, Dr. Quisenberry, Dr. Martin, and Ms. Alavito.
As they're working their way up and getting ready to get set up for this afternoon's presentation, I do want to take a moment. And I do want to thank our friends from FGCU for being here. And I want to thank the Dean, Dr. Hyam, from the College of Education for being here. Uni, thank you so much for the work that you've done. The staff and the faculty, we have really embarked on a historic journey. And a journey that many school districts do not get the opportunity to participate in. And I keep telling Dr. Atkins that since my arrival, this is the most exciting part of my job is working with this committee. It is truly a collaborative group of professionals that are looking to do something different for our students with the intent of helping future teachers be the best they can be at their craft before they ever walk into a school, a public school, and for our students to really be able to achieve at high levels. And so the purpose of this afternoon's presentation is to talk about where we've been. Where did this journey begin? What has been some of the work of the committee? What's, some of the decisions that we've made at this point? And then where are we going moving forward? And so our Directors of Teaching and Learning, as well as Director of Professional Development, they're going to lead us in this conversation. Our friends from FGCU and our team are here to follow up with answering any questions that you may have as well. So thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
Talk into it.
Okay. It's working. Okay. Good, I guess it's afternoon now. Good afternoon. And I just want to reiterate what Dr. Spiro just said, that this has been a very exciting committee to be a part of. The MOU was signed August 29th by the board, and our committee got started right away. So we have been meeting every other, no, I can't believe it's already been a year. We, we, we've been meeting every other Wednesday with FGCU and with our committee, all of the members you'll see on the screen. The committee has grown as our need for everyone that has a very important purpose for our committee has began to, to join with us. So as the time has gone, our committee has also grown. I think I said everything I was supposed to say. Yes, we, I already said that. We began in July 2018. Sorry.
So I wanted to, before we go into too much detail of the recommendations of the committee, I wanted to ground us in some of the research that exists on the nine essentials for a professional development school partnership. So the overall goal of a professional development school partnership, or PDS, as I will begin to refer to it as, is really to transform teacher preparation. And that work is accomplished through the collaboration of K to 12 staff, as well as university faculty and staff. And that work is primarily accomplished in order to provide every student in every classroom with a highly effective educator through innovating instructional practices, collaborative and joint professional development, as well as sharing the proven practices with a larger audience through research. So the Innovation School really provides our district with a fantastic opportunity to build upon some current work that we've done, as well as take it to the next level. So I'll start you with a little bit of information on the current work that is taking place in terms of rethinking teacher preparation through a partnership that we have in place already with FGCU. So FGCU's College of Education currently serves students who are seeking a bachelor's degree in elementary education, as well as secondary education. And you can see the secondary majors listed there. Enrollment in College of Education is shrinking across the nation, as well as the state, and in our area. So our district really has a vested interest in helping to attract, develop, hire, and retain every single FGCU College of Education graduate in order to fulfill that goal of providing every student with a highly effective educator. So in order to accomplish that goal, we've worked together with FGCU to make sure that their student teachers have currently experiences in Title I and non-Title I schools. You were provided with a list of current schools that FGCU student teachers are placed at for FY '20. Fifty-six percent of those are representative of Title I status. And principals opted in to participating in student teacher placements through a survey, as well as kind of analysis of program needs as they were taking place. So in short, our goal is really to ensure that our College of Education's students know what it's like to work in a real school with real students, so they're prepared to meet the needs of any classroom and every single student that would come across throughout their career. So one promising practice already in place is our STAR Teacher Program. And the STAR Program allows a high-performing College of Education student that's on their final internship, the opportunity to serve as a full-time teacher of record in a vacant teaching position throughout the course of an entire district semester. So preschool week to the end, right before winter break. And it's our goal that the final internship for them is very positive and that they remain in that role for the rest of the school year. STAR interns are, they go through a rigorous selection process, which includes a written application at the university level, and then a district level interview, and then a school level interview as well, to really make sure that the setting that they're being placed at is a great match. We have three STAR interns for this semester so far. One is placed at Franklin Park. And then two are also placed at Veterans Park. They're sharing a grade level, so they're very excited about that for this semester. So over the past two years, the professional development team has worked in collaboration with Florida Gulf Coast University to continue that redesign of what that student internship experience looks like. So the table represented on this slide reflects some of those current practices in place. So the Block 1 and Block 2 teacher replacements occur really early on in the College of Education coursework for students, so about their sophomore year into their junior year as well. And what that looks like is that the students have the opportunity to spend 16 entire school days from start to finish of the day within a school. And during that time, they're paired with a mentor teacher. And they have certain tasks they have to complete. Like, one of the very first tasks they do is locate the safety plan for the building. And then they also have activities such as design and deliver an intervention to a small group of students. So that way, they have more comfort in the classroom and they have a more realistic idea of what goes on in the day-to-day inner workings of a school and the life of a teacher. So last year was our first year kind of implementing that structure and that pilot. The survey feedback from the FGCU students was extremely positive. They start their student teaching experience this semester, and they were less nervous going into it than previous cohorts before.
I have a question. Do they get an opportunity to visit different grade levels? Or is it just one 16-day at one level? Because I know when I first started teaching, having the opportunity to see different levels helped me to decide where I wanted to be.
Yes, they do. That's part of their task list that they have to do. So spend some time in some other levels and some other subject areas as well. So when they enter their senior year, they take on that student teacher role, and they gain gradually more and more responsibilities in the classroom until they're serving as the full-time teacher within the classroom. And then professional development, we work with FGCU to pair the student teachers with their cooperating teachers in their final internship and their schools. And the teachers are highly effective or effective, and recommended by their principal, and they've completed their required training. So something that I'd like to point out that we're really proud of this work, so between the efforts that are outlined on this slide, we've placed 200 FGCU College of Education students this semester within our schools. So with the Innovation School, we have an exciting opportunity to kind of have one location where all of these efforts kind of take place in one area. But it cannot and would not be the only place that that work occurs, simply because of the need to ensure that the students have diverse experiences, but also the scale of the number of students that we're placing.
So when we first began our work, as I said before, it was very exciting. So try to picture a group of amazing educators trying to come up with, if you could create a school, what would it look like? And so we started by researching other lab schools across the country, as well as in our state. This will be the first lab school, as they refer to when you have a partnership with the university. This will be the first lab school that is a public school. All of the other universities open charter schools for this endeavor. So I really applaud FGCU for partnering with us to open the first public school with this type of partnership. So we started, of course, with our vision, mission, and guiding principles. And our most important need was to ensure that we were creating lifelong learners, not only for students, but also for teachers. And to create a, a model for other educators that are across our district, across our state, across the nation, to be able to come in and really see theory in practice. So you take that research, and what does it actually look like in a classroom? How does it actually work, you know, with students with these best practices?
So that led us to, what does that actually look like? Where were we going to agree? And this is where we spent the bulk of last year. So up until April, all of our conversations circled around curriculum and instruction. How do we marry these two pieces between the school district of Lee County and FGCU? And what we came up with is, in your draft documents, which is your tab there, is that we will still follow all state standards. If we want this to be replicable in all of our schools here in Lee County, well, then we need to be following the state standards, because that's the same expectation all of our other schools are held accountable to. And we need to also follow Lee County's textbook adoption. These are the resources that our teachers go onto committees, they select the materials. So we want the same materials that are there. So if those two pieces we know are going to be consistent throughout all of our schools, where is the marriage coming in then? So what we've landed on is that we're going to follow a 3E model. And what that 3E model really allows us to do is take consideration of that whole child approach that we continue to talk about as a school district. But it lays a foundation for, at this school, this will be part of the school's DNA, that we will help students experience through observation, through learning, through conversations, to that application process, all while engaging with our community partners and our partnerships that we have with other schools and FGCU. That'll be a very hands-on approach. That'll be very problem-based learning, but application that's applied to our community and our needs there, all with embedded in the 4C model of critical thinking, collaboration, communication. So that was the conversation, as we talked about theory and practices. There's a lot of best practices out there around pedagogy and rooted, what is it that we were going to say at this school is our guiding principles? And wrapping all of that around, though, is really embedding universal design for learning, that we're providing all students opportunities to engage in learning in a multitude of ways, and providing our teachers with professional development of what are those best practices? What does it look like? How can it sound? Taking, for instance, closed caption, that that is an enhancement that sometimes we think about for students who have a hearing. However, I know in my own home, when my two children are running around, closed caption go on for me because I need to be able to see. That that is not something we think about. It's a device we all can benefit from. So it's really important that we use that best practice and we root that in for all teachers upfront.
So you referred to the yellow tab in your strategic plan, the committee recommendations for the physical building, because a lot of the things that we're talking about is collaboration, right? And some, some innovation around what, what classrooms can look like. So again, if you take off, if you start being innovative and you really start thinking, if I could have designed my classroom, what would that look like? And so, you know, we got really creative at first, and then we got back down to reality. And then we started talking about, well, of course, it has to meet safety and security. So it would have to meet all of the safety and security needs for our state, as well as our nation. And then making sure that we meet the needs for student enrollment, no matter where the school is placed, it would have to meet those needs for our district. But we could provide a large space for professional development. Professional development space is already a need in our district. This, this building seems to keep getting smaller and smaller as we continue to provide, which is a wonderful thing, continue to provide more and more professional development. We would like to have a space that can hold 200 to 250 people, not only to provide space for our teachers across the district, but also for the interns to be able to have a common space to come for their PD. Office spaces, we're going to get to that in just a minute, for the staff from FGCU that will be permanently housed in the school. And then as well as space for academies and enrichment. So we took some field trips to some different places as a committee, and Benita High School was one of those. And we talked about the way that those academies were built, where they were structured so that they could be anything, right? They're, they're a shell that we can use later to, to create that academy. And then if the need changed, we would be able to change the need for that academy.
So one of the other pieces that are in here that are real big that we talked about, and the picture kind of illustrates it, is this observation piece. One of the pieces that we talked about a long time is, when did you learn how to be a teacher? And it was really getting in there and experiencing it and being able to have those conversations. So with this building, though, it's going to be important as our interns are there, but also as we want this to be a professional development hub for all teachers of Lee County, is that means we need to be able to see what the students are doing, but not constantly interrupting classrooms either. So really thinking about our current buildings and how our classrooms are set up, and how can we have an observation pod in the middle? So you have your classrooms, but you have a space in between those four classrooms that allows you to see everything that's going on, but to also be able to have an open conversation without disrupting the students and their learning. It's one thing, our students have gotten very used to people being in their buildings, which is awesome. It's another thing to be able to engage in conversation with the colleagues around what you're seeing. So that is one of the recommendations, if this is going to be a true teaching school as well, that it really should have a space in it that allows for observation.
As well as one more consideration, if the school has multiple buildings, to ensure that those buildings are close together, so that we are able to utilize, you know, all of the spaces if students are, are going to a different academy, if they're in elementary and they're sharing the middle school space, or maybe through acceleration in one of their content areas, that it's a safe place for students to be able to go back and forth to the buildings. So as we were getting creative, as I said earlier, and through innovation, we also started researching, what was the best model? What were some different models for schools across the nation, as well as in our state? And through some research through Miami-Dade, we started looking at, they call it primary school models. And so we found many of these across the nation as well, where instead of a traditional elementary school, you had a pre-K to 3. And what that allows is for the school and the teachers to really focus on those foundational skills, to really make sure that those students have their phonics, their phonological awareness, their fluency. And so then when they move into fourth grade, they are fluid on grade-level readers, and they're able to move on to reading to learn, rather than learning to read. So that was one of our possible options, as well as what we're all used to, the pre-K to 5 and 6 to 8, or what we already have in our county, which is a pre-K to 8.
So this is a piece that the committee is still considering options as we continue to look for research around best practices, and what happens with student achievement. So really focusing in on some of the Hamilton Project, which embeds work by Schwart that is centered around Florida. So it's a project that does all of Florida schools. And what is the research say about when students transition out of fifth grade and into sixth grade? and what is the research say about when students transition out of 5th grade and into 6th grade? There's often this decline, and why does that decline happen? So you'll see, that's why the committee is still looking at these possibilities. And as Dr. Quisenberry said earlier, proximity of buildings. If there are multiple buildings, what research says over and over is, there's that decline because sometimes they lose that piece of connection. So how do you make a large school feel like a small school and continue to build that? So regardless of which one of these, knowing that there's got to be a cohesiveness as the students move through those grade levels. This shows the commitment between FGCU and the School District of Lee County. It's the organizational plan that falls underneath. How is this school governed? And it's governed like all of our schools in Lee County. At the head of it, you'll see the School Board of Lee County. It's a public school. As Dr. Quisenberry mentioned earlier, it's really exciting that this could be the very first public lab school. There's not one out there. So it would be governed by our School Board of Lee County. And then as we branch off from there, the school itself would have a principal. It would have a School District of Lee County representative. It would have the FGCU College of Education Dean. And from there, it would build a leadership team that would be made up of School District of Lee County and FGCU. And then it branches out from there, your teachers and staff, who would fall underneath the School District of Lee County, your pre-service teachers, and your clinical faculty, all feeding back together for that partnership, that one collaborative effort. But again, the importance of falling underneath the School District of Lee County.
What is a pre-service teacher? Is that the interns?
Yeah.
So the next question that we've grappled with is, how would we staff the building? What would the human resources look like in this setting? So based off of our recommendations and our discussions so far, the innovation at the Innovation School will really come in through the professional learning that takes place there, as well as the way in which instruction is delivered. So the committee has recommended that the school follow the traditional public school DRA allocation, salary schedules, and job descriptions, as well as the applicable talc and spout contracts, because we can think back to our times when we were in the classroom as teachers, and we anticipate that this is a place that people will want to work, and they will be very excited to be a part of the work that's taking place there. But we do recognize that there's going to be a high level of collaboration and innovation and professional learning that will take place in this school. So we do have a recommendation that we have the opportunity to start with a new school in order to build that commitment to collaboration and innovation into kind of every decision in terms of hiring and selecting the employees to work in the building, as well as onboarding and training them in order to meet the needs of the building. So part of that as well, this school, I think with us, comes with an opportunity to provide great collaboration with FGCU. So in order to share some of the best practices that are piloted within the building, which many of us would love to have the time to write research if we did not have normal day-to-day functions of our role. However, that's not always an option for us. But in order really to kind of prove and really make known the best practices that are taking place in this building, FGCU has agreed to fund the 10 positions that are listed on this slide here. And what I think is unique about the positions, they reflect a focus on STEM, literacy, and really differentiating instruction at all levels in order, again, going back to meeting the needs of every single learner that is present within the building. The positions would be fully funded by FGCU. They would serve a 12-month contract. They would be present, of course, for the district school year, but they would have time during the summer as well to do that great writing and reports for research. And they would reside full-time at the Innovation School. So that was part of our need to maybe have some flexible office spaces for them there. The faculty would also assist in implementing instructional practices, evaluating the impact of those practices, and then sharing the learning with a broader audience. And they would be available as well to provide professional learning to all teachers and all administrators in Lee County as well. And then funding for the positions would be provided or gone after secured through FGCU's legislative efforts. So while the location has not yet been determined, the committee has recommended that the school is located in close proximity to FGCU. One of the reasons for that is many of the students at FGCU do not have cars. So if it was in close proximity to FGCU, that would remove the barrier of transportation for them and would allow them the opportunity to get in the school sooner and have more interactions with students and really understand what the day-to-day workings of a school are like. So many of us base our decisions off education about what we experienced as a student, and the state of the profession has changed drastically, really within the past four years, 10 years. So having that early experience for them is really vital to making an informed decision about their career path as well. Also, as Bethany and Candace said before, the lab schools that currently exist within the state of Florida that are operated by the Florida Public Universities, those are on-site of the universities, and they're also operated as charter schools. This school would be unique because it would be a public lab school, one of the first of its kind in the nation. But close proximity to FGCU would allow all FGCU faculty, not just the 10 clinical staff that would be housed at the school, to be integrated in the day-to-day work of the school as well.
So the only other piece that we have up there with as a location consideration is we know, Lee County, we are growing very rapidly, and there is a need for schools in both the South and East Zones within the next five years. So that is a piece that we're also considering. So with that, it's the committee's recommendation, and the green tab in your handout is that it's important to the committee that this school is very diverse and inclusive and representative of the demographics of our Lee County student population. So it's the committee's recommendation that regardless of where this building lives, is that it doesn't have boundaries. It crosses zones. So knowing the need for transportation at FGCU, it would be very nice for this to cross both the South Zones and the East Zones for our students, which means that the student assignment would look different than our other schools. And that's outlined there. And on page three, you'll happen to see what the demographics look like when you look at all of our students in the South and East Zones and how that compares to our district. So while as a team, we went very deep into curriculum and how are we going to root ourselves into theory and practice, this one was very easy for the committee, that both FGCU and the School District of Lee County, it's important for our interns' experience, as well as our teachers who will be there, that it is representative of the students of Lee County. And with that, we'd like to open it up to questions.
We did have one half hour allocated for this, but I think it's a really important subject. So if it's okay with everybody, we're just going to take questions until we're done. Will you go with that? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah. I heard what you said about crossing both the East and the South Zones. But I'm curious why, on this chart, you combined the two zones. And the other thing I wanted to comment on is, as a school district, we're working on making those bus routes shorter. So, you know, one of the things that I would be looking at is, you know, do we really want to have to bus kids 15 miles or more from, let's say, somewhere in Lee High Acres to Estero, for instance?
Absolutely, and that's a conversation we've had a lot of. The reason the map is shown that's there is this is our current map that is on our district site and where the zones are. So knowing that one of our greatest location needs is proximity to FGCU for our interns and our placements there, not having a location set, we know that transportation will have to come up in those pieces, and we've considered all of those things as well. However, since there isn't a location set at this moment, we know that our committee's recommendation, the only recommendation really bringing forward, is that we want it to be representative of the students of Lee County, and that this will continue to have to be flushed out and won't be able to be flushed out until there is a final selection of a location.
Is it possible for us to get, just for comparison sakes, splitting South and East Zone to see relatively how that would work out? And not to be callous, but if the FGCU students are wanting a career in teaching, they better save their nickels and dimes for cars. I mean, I'm not trying to be callous, but I'm trying to be realistic that no matter where this school is placed, would that mean the FGCU transportation system would be busing them to the Innovation School? Or how would that work if they don't have cars?
Currently, it works right now. We work to cluster the students and the locations that we have there. So they usually carpool with each other to get there. And I know, I'll just speak on some of my experiences as working with FGCU students, as many of them are first-generation college students as well. So they're the first in their family to go to college, so they are working towards that goal of providing their own transportation. But it doesn't necessarily come, you know, automatic with their, for that.
I'm just thinking of my own thousand-year-ago experience where...
They do figure it out.
It was thrilling because I actually got to bring a car on campus, which was nice back then.
They work it out with each other. Some of them do take Uber, or some of them take public transportation.
While I have the floor, if that's okay. The other thing is, looking at the diagram with the glass-din area, and yes, I did hear what you say, the added benefit of the professional colleagues discussing things that they're seeing. But we have talked about having, building a school that would serve as an innovation school, or in the future, if that need had to move to a different location, or for whatever reason, that structure was no longer an innovation school, that it would work well with what we would normally build. And of course, we also get into the issue of, that we just heard from the committee member, the tax committee member, about the cops and the ceiling on student stations. So obviously, when we have a classroom that looks anywhere similar with the glass-din walls and the ability to hear, it's going to cost a lot more. So we're going to have the issue, I was just wondering if you dealt with that, like the nuts and bolts? That issue and the idea that a school that we built in this way could, at some point, if necessary, easily transition to a non-innovation school? So what discussion have you guys had along that line?
So that's been part of our newest conversation, and it's wonderful as we engage more people into the conversation about flexible spaces and 21st century learning, and what does it look like for collaboration? What is our current prototype, and what can be done on the inside of those? And it's been amazing for us, who are curriculum and professional development, to learn about cost per square foot and what you can do, and concrete, and how many inches you have to have. It's been a learning experience for those pieces. So that partnership that has developed between FGCU and here to root in, who are we, and what do we want to, how does that look, and sustain long-term? Because we want to be able to replicate it. So all of those pieces have been part of the conversation, and they are ongoing parts of the conversation.
New part. Has there been any commitment from FGCU to fund some of these special areas and/or special materials or equipment that might be needed?
When Dr. Spiro is done, Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, and we anticipated that question. And one of the commitments that we have from FGCU and from President Martin is really their commitment to conduct fundraising and to make sure that anything that's above and beyond that would make this school different and unique to meet the needs both the university, as well as the School District of Lee County, they made a commitment to be part of that process. And so what, the way it's going to work is, once we have a design of what we feel this building is going to look like, it has been approved by the board, and we start moving forward, then they begin their fundraising efforts as well. But they need to have some conceptual designs before they can just go out and start asking for funds.
The state's not helping them either, huh?
They will be doing some fundraising, yes.
Well, one thing, though, that we would be using, I know there was talk before about using the prototype that we already have and adjusting it. Is that a possibility with, anyway?
Yes, it has certainly been a possibility. I mean, we've engaged, you know, Scott and Kathy in these conversations. You know, if you look at some of our prototypes, both the elementary and also the middle, there is some space that we could, we can really look at, reevaluate how we use that space. An example would be if you go out to, we're going to go out to Harnes Marsh Middle. And if you go out to Harnes Marsh Middle, you're going to see a very, very large media center. And if you talk to the principal at Benita Springs High School, he'll tell you that we really don't need that type of space in the future with the use of Chromebooks and other digital media so we could look at reevaluating how we use that. Possibly that would be the professional development space, or it could be used for some of this collaborative office space. So there's a lot of, I think, opportunities to look at existing structure. But we've also had conversations with the dean about working to mutually fundraise or to jointly take together requests to our local delegation to try to secure additional revenue if we go above and beyond. So all of that is a part of these ongoing discussions.
So does that mean, then, we would not be looking at borrowing anything to do this project? That it would be done through either fundraising or change in heart of the legislators?
It doesn't necessarily mean that because we would have to use our existing mechanisms to build the traditional structure anyways. So as you heard, you know, earlier, we were talking about cops versus the use of sales tax dollars. So we have to build buildings regardless, and in the South and the East Zone. This presents us with a wonderful opportunity. But to build those buildings at this point, if we were going to strike a shovel today, it would be using cops funding to do that portion of it. And then if we go over and above what we would normally be spending for a prototype, that's where you're looking for the additional revenue from other sources.
So if we stayed within our prototype that we've used before, would we be over that cost per student station? Is that the difference that we're looking at?
If the design puts us over that cost.
But if we, in other words, if we built it just with our prototype for middle or high school, like we've always done, could we do that without cops for revenue? That was moved into that?
No.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Please, Ms. Fisher.
So what is the anticipated student K8 population for the school?
It depends on the school's location. So we've been, we've been looking at the needs of the schools that are already on the list to be built, and so it would meet those capacities. It would depend on the location.
Okay, so then that answers my other question, too. And the multi-age classroom? Is that designed to hopefully be a model for us later on down the road? And how will that impact the accountability? You know, the FSA test?
Yes. Well, it depends on which model you're looking at. So if you're looking at the pre-K to 3 primary model that I spoke to, FSA testing doesn't begin until 3rd grade. And so it would, that's another reason why that model sometimes works really well, is because you only have that one year that you're finding the accountability. Sorry, that was the wrong term to use, but you know what I mean. The accountability system. Right. But it, there's different ways that we can ensure, through our VAM models that I'll turn over to Candace to talk about, to ensure that that accountability is still sides with teachers.
Part, though, to that is, it's similar to what we're already doing with our middle school math progression, though, where we have 6th grade students, who they are grade 6 students. However, they are taking grade 7 math. So their accountability, their assessment that they take at the end of the year is the grade 7 assessment. So they would take an assessment that is tied to the course and not necessarily their grade. So it allows for the student to move at a pace that they are ready for, and when they show they're ready to move to that content. So that wouldn't be a barrier. It would be something we're already doing, similar to our math progression.
When you move, when you move into 4th and 5th grade classrooms now, the majority of our schools departmentalize, which means you have a math teacher, a science teacher, an ELA teacher. And so it would be unique for that model to then carry right over into the middle school as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I just want to say, having signed the agreement a year ago, I am just so awed.
Yes, I just want to say, having signed the agreement a year ago, I am just so awed by how much you've gotten done, and how, I mean, it just gives me goosebumps to see what you're thinking about. And even if you can't accomplish 100% of it, basically, you're changing the paradigm for how education will be delivered, you know, 21st-century-wise. We may not be able to do it all, but we're starting. And I congratulate all of you for this hard work. I'm just, I'm excited.
Did you have air?
Yes, I did. And first, let me echo what Ms. Morgan said. In looking at the goal for this, it was continuous improvement for achievement, and that is a very, you know, plottable goal for us to be, to raise our level of achievement. What it does bring to mind about location, of course, is if we were able to bring up the achievement of our lowest area, then we'd all kind of be on an even keel, which is kind of the way that I look at it. So the question is about, with the location, I know you're looking at, do we have property already besides the property that was purchased in Astero for middle and K through eight? Are there any of our other properties that we currently own that would fit the bill for this type of a project as well? And so answer that question if you can.
So the scope of the work the committee has been doing has been around the framework and the structure, what the building would look like inside, in regard to teaching and learning. We have not taken into consideration certain pieces of property. That's why when we talked about, one of the slides was about buildings close in proximity. Because we looked at possibilities, let's say it's a smaller piece of property, and we do one building, let's say it's a larger piece of property, and there's two buildings. So we're just trying to think very conceptually. So at this point, property location has not really been a decision that certainly this group's part of. This is merely about, what does it look like inside of the building?
Okay, and my last statement on that is that from FGCU to Astero's 10 miles to Lehigh at 17, thank you.
Thoroughly noted.
One of the things that, you know, that I think we do need to keep in mind is simultaneously, we're working on the proximity student assignment system. And so this gives us an opportunity, as we engage with a consultant, to look at different ways in which we assign students that might be outside what we are currently doing. And in addition to that, you're looking at different transportation conduits that you can transport students to and from certain areas within the East and the South Zone at a relatively quick pace. Certain corridors do open up and may allow us to bring students in from the East. And then finally, remember that we are currently doing this at Dunbar High School very successfully. So we do have that model open to both the South and the East Zones. So, you know, that's just another example that we see now, where we're doing something that we can take, you know, take note of and improve upon it moving forward.
Ms. Wall?
Yeah. One of the things that I like about all the research you guys have done is coming forth with these different models. And frankly, I have been a fan of the primary school model for a long time. And I'm just wondering, as you went through the different models, did you come up with school districts? Because I've seen it, and one of the districts where my children attended, when we lived in Texas, had their elementary went up through sixth grade, and then they called it junior high, they had just seventh and eighth. And some of the surrounding schools at the time had like a junior high, I know, the old-fashioned kind, where they also had the ninth graders in it. Did you come up with any of those? Because it seems to me, observing the different grade levels, there's kind of big stepping stones between being a, you know, like, to me, the sixth graders are still kind of babies, and they seem to do pretty well in elementary as well. But anyway, what else did you see, districts that had a lot of these primary models? What did they do for the older grades?
We're still working on that research. It was a little difficult to find without contacting the districts, because they're called elementary schools, or they're called middle schools, and you really, or junior high. And so you really had to dig in and make some contacts to find out what they consider to be an elementary school. Even in Miami Dade, when you look at the Florida DOE, they don't identify them as pre-K to three, they're still called elementary schools. And so it's been some work of our team to really go in and start looking at that. I'm going to turn it over to Candace, though, because she did some extensive research on where that data starts to drop.
And certainly, although this is in conjunction with the innovation school, it can translate to our other schools, and who knows? We might be changing some current elementary schools into primary models. And as we work toward our proximity schools, I know the way the schools are situated, how they were built, sometimes it complicates the matter on having proximity. But there's a possibility that if you had school X into primary, and then school Y and Z into, you know, five and six, or four, five, six, whatever, that that might help with that issue as well. So what did you find out?
So the Hamilton Project is one of the biggest ones. It's a discussion that's gone on since 2011 to 2018. And what the research really points around is that there's a drop in academics, whether it's a K-six and then you transition in seven, or whether it's a K-five and you transition in six. What the research really points to is the relationship. So one of the reasons that you saw proximity of buildings is that no matter how the grade level bands are structured, that the way the drop doesn't happen is the relationships between the two schools. So even as we continue to think about our current models and our current schools, those schools that are already close together, and one pops into my head, Manatee and Oak, how do we strengthen the partnerships between those two schools so you don't see that decline in sixth grade? So it's why that one that Dr. Quinseyberry talked about of the pre-K-three and the 4-8, that's a different model. That doesn't have quite as much research around it, but it would allow for the foundational skills to really be embedded. And then fours, really, when you get into that testing and the achievement and departmentalization, it would allow for a different transition. But there's not as much research around it, because it's different. But yes, to answer your question, regardless of it's six or seven, there's a drop. It's all about the relationships and the connections between that elementary to middle or elementary to junior high.
That is so odd, and it probably, any of us who've ever taught sixth graders, we know, don't we, that sixth graders, they're an interesting breed. I mean, that really is...
That's a good way to put it.
That's really interesting that it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter where you make the separation. So the seventh-grade data drops if you hold, it's just that natural transition that's happening, that takes out. So it's how do we bridge that? So that transition happens more seamlessly, depending upon where it is. Because there is not as the same decline when they hit ninth grade. So something happens from eight to nine that our ninth graders don't see that same. And I say don't, it swarms, his work 2011 that's done on all Florida districts, that's where it specifically points to, and they mention it doesn't happen in the high schools the way it happens in sixth or seventh grade.
Wow, interesting, thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, if it's okay. I see on page 13 of the organizational plan, joint pre-K through 12 innovative school. And we've talked about through middle school, but we haven't touched on the high school.
Well, the committee felt that it was important that even though the school would only go to eighth, that we were still partnering with a high school and even further, so that all of our best practices went through. And so in the beginning of our stages, Jeff Estes was actually part of the committee from Benita High, and was working with us to ensure that in the middle school side, we were preparing those students for high school.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Morgan mentioned goosebumps. I was feeling a little verklempt, actually, at the amount of work that has taken place here. I just, I am stunned. And you have my most sincere appreciation, and I just, I mean, this is a partnership. This is exactly what it looks like. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I do have to mention that, as I was going through the backup materials, I saw we're looking at fundraising and we're looking at community involvement. And the infrastructure already exists in Astero for those two things with the Astero Education Initiative. We have so much community involvement in our schools that we had to actually put the brakes on. Seriously, we really did. It was so overwhelming when they put the call-out for volunteers and for involvement in the schools. So I feel like that infrastructure is already in place, and Nick Bedos and I are like on the edge of putting out a huge fundraising campaign for the schools. And I think this would be the kind of thing that would really ignite some excitement from donors in that area. So just throw that out there. I don't know if that was a consideration for you, but like I said, that infrastructure already exists.
Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I think this is all great as well, but I, like you said, that they're excited about it in Astero. I do hear...
No, no, they're not. We haven't had this conversation in Astero.
Okay, well, the people in...
I'm saying, I think it might be something they would get excited about.
Yeah, I'm sure they definitely would. But when you're looking at the map, Lee County is just a huge county. I mean, we have so many people here. But when you look at the East Zone, South Zone, West Zone, and what comprises of the South Zone and East Zone, if you take that and put a center zone in there, I think that would have, because it's not really about how many miles, like you said, 10 to 17. It's what, how long does that take? The 10 miles or the 17 miles could be an hour, two-hour drive, depending upon, you know, the traffic and everything else that's taking place. And I know that the communities within, because obviously, the school looks like it's going to be a fabulous school, and people are going to want their children to go there. But it is pretty scary when you're looking at the kids from Lehigh, and they look at Lehigh and the possibility of having to go all the way to Astero. I mean, to me, it's nothing to drive there. But when you look at families and putting little people on buses, to that extent, that's a lot to ask of parents. And I just think that, and again, I keep going to central Fort Myers, as, I just think we need to be more centralized as far as, you know, options when we're going to look for places. And then one other thing, I didn't see Dr. Kiana Desmore's name on there, and she's here, too. I just had to say that, a shout-out.
One of the pieces that we feel is really important with the school is regardless of where the location is, that there is an opportunity for the school to serve as a model school and as a training grounds for our teachers and our leaders, so that all students and all teachers and all leaders and the district have the opportunity to benefit from the good work taking place there. So we understand, and we wish we could have more of them.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
And my comment kind of goes along with that, because in looking, like on page nine, some of the learning environment that you're discussing is PBIS and looping and those types of things. So the suggestion would be, we can't put, you know, one in every zone, but using those best practices and kind of multiplying the concept that way in all of the rest of our schools is something, and maybe that's happening through the internships and the Stars Program, but perhaps we could kind of beef that up as far as a part of the partnership besides this one main school, that these concepts that aren't in all of our schools, that do show continuous improvement and achievement, to be placed, you know, infused. I mean, I look at the, like, MMM that we're getting ready to build now, and our high schools are so large that my thought is that if we don't do looping in large schools with over 2,000 students, students get lost. But the idea of looping, and for the sake of everyone, in other words, if you had a freshman team of administrators and teachers, they move up with those students on up through their education. It helps with the mental health piece and the social piece, and because now you really know what Johnny looks like when he's mad and when he's happy, you know? But in 2,000 students, you can get lost. So I'm just saying that I hope we use some of your principles and start them early on in some of our other schools, so that we can kind of infuse that throughout.
And just to touch on that, on page nine, that PBIS, the best part about this partnership between FGCU and Lee County is some of the great things that are already going on in the schools that we want to continue. So that PBIS blurb that's right there comes actually directly out of the work of Chuck Bradley and his team this past year, and the five Rs, and that we're pushing out to all of our schools this year, and we want to see all of our students in those five Rs. So that's work that we do want to continue. So just as you said, infusing those best practices into all.
The last thing I have, and I really will stop, is the selection process. And as I was reading it, are you looking at that like as a committee, or who would be involved in making those decisions? Because if we're not very careful about that, it becomes what the other institutions have, and that's a private school. Because somebody knows somebody who knows somebody who gets their kid moved up the list, and someone who really needs to be there gets pushed out. How will we make sure that doesn't happen?
Are you referring to selection process for staff or for students?
No, for students.
For students.
Sorry to make you get up. You should sit closer.
We made eye contact.
We wanted to make sure that the school is diverse, and we have, at this point, the committee has not focused in on entirely what that entire structure would look like to ensure the diversity, other than we know, we've had conversations about an application process to make sure that we maintain the diversity that represents the entire district. But in regard to the details of how that would work, as far as who would make that selection, how would it make sure that, you know, there's fidelity to the entire process? Those details would need to be worked out prior, obviously, a little bit more down the road.
Well, I think, too, we have the opportunity, as I said earlier, you know, we're looking at the proximity-based system anyway, and working with a consultant. And in that, you're going to have to contemplate making some changes to our existing student assignment process. And so, and then regardless of whatever you do, you want to make sure that that process is embedded in the student assignment plan that we bring before you to be approved. So all of that stuff, you know, we look at every single year, we bring to the board also. So moving forward, you know, you will be involved in those conversations.
I have one last question, and it's the most important one. In some parts of this, it's referred to as the innovative school, and in other parts, it's the innovation school. Can we all use the same?
We just had that conversation.
I'd like to know what it's called, so that I can talk about it the same way everybody else is talking about it.
Yeah.
Innovation Partner School?
Innovation Partner School, excellent, good, thank you. I like innovation better, anyway, because innovative is descriptive, it's not a noun, whatever. Okay, good, I think we're good. Do we have any other questions or comments? You guys are awesome. You guys rock. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go back to executive services and all of the policies. Dr. Atkins, are these the policies that we adopted during a meeting when we did not have the ability to have a supermajority? So we're basically...
Some of them are, yes. The majority of them are, yes.
So if we could handle these in two ways, first, which ones are not? Do you know?
I believe that, I want to say the family involvement is not...
We've seen that one before, haven't we?
Yes.
All of these before.
That's what I thought. All right, then, why don't we just look at the list? And if there are questions from board members on specific items, then we can address those. Otherwise, I don't see the utility in going through them. Many of these are already in place, we're just reapproving them with a supermajority.
Are there any specific ones that have a lot of change to them, superintendent?
Homeless students.
No, except for, you know, the ones that we brought forward as a part of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas requirements. We did have, like, this threat assessment team as a new policy. So, you know, if you look at that one, and we did talk about it, but if you look at that one, that's all new policy, 2.16.
We've looked at that already.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, seeing no questions or comments on those, we will move on to... All right, seeing no questions or comments on those, we will move on to item H1, Capitol Project Update.
So will these move on to our next action meeting?
Do we need one more public?
There was already at an action meeting, so we just need a vote.
Attorney Saunders.
So my understanding was that it's going to need to go through the process as if it had never been done before. So, yeah, so you would need, so this would technically, I think, be the first meeting.
The pre-briefing, and then we'll have a briefing, and then it will go to action.
That's correct.
May I ask a question? Superintendent, what's our, I know we have the 90 days, but I'm gathering we want to get that done as soon as possible?
Correct.
So do we have a, could we have like a briefing meeting for like, you know, 30 minutes before our action meeting, just to, or bring it up for, I don't know, to get it done quicker?
Well, I think that, you know, we did take the emergency action to put the policy in place. So from that perspective, we're in good stead. I think that we're okay to follow our normal process, this being a pre-briefing, then briefing, and then action will fall within that 90 days.
So, okay, so we're still not talking until September to pass that?
Again, we have this approved for, you know, the 90 days. So we have a policy in place. This is to make sure that we, it gets reapproved, is the way I look at it, reapproved by a supermajority.
Okay.
Great. Okay, so Mr. Ichtenbacher?
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, this is your monthly Capitol update on some of the projects that are currently ongoing within the district. Senior School, at least, Lehigh Senior High School, an addition successfully opened. I believe several of you attended the grand opening and the parents' night back. My understanding is that the principal and the school staff love the addition, and everything seems to be functioning fairly well so far. We're in the process of doing project closeout and completion of punchless items and finishing up some of the exterior site grading and so forth. Portables, we successfully deployed 11 more portables in the east zone, Lehigh Acres Middle, Ocamet, Harns Marsh Middle. They all have certificates of occupancy and are being utilized.
May I ask, some of those were, like, at Harns Marsh, were moved from Lehigh Senior?
No, ma'am. What we're doing now is all of the portables that were stockpiled from the LLL initial freshman year class behind Astero High School are being pulled to support the need for portables. The remaining portables that we own that are at that Astero High School site will be shifted in the next couple of months behind Lehigh Senior to support the MMM freshman class in 2020.
So what is our total, well, I can ask you that off. I'm just wondering how many we have.
I can try to answer if you like.
How many are in these zone right now?
It was over 100. I think I provided that to you, but we can get you that right after that meeting. That was, Ms. Pat had sent you their sheet that showed all of the locations. I think it's well over 100 in the east zone.
Okay.
The last is, we got our kickoff going on MM Middle School on Sunrise Boulevard. We're out there yesterday, and today, we're doing our test drilling for structure for the foundation. We have meetings. We're going to meet with some property owners that we have to, we have a combined easement for the access roadway. It's a private roadway, so we'll be working through that endeavor. And I believe, I believe we're on track, and I believe that the negotiations with that property owner will be successful, and we're just beginning our permitting process now with Water Management and Army Corps on that site. Okay? And last but not least, MMM High School, thank you for your 7-0 approval of confidence to begin this project. The groundbreaking is in place. The contract is in the superintendent's office, and I believe it's being executed this afternoon following attorney review. I did get some more information, as you had some questions in regards to some comparable schools that we had. And I utilized the proposed school you saw in the paper at Collier County, $94 million. I got a little bit more information to support some of the statements we made. And this is both from news articles and from Collier staff. The $94 million did not include the land cost. It was construction cost. Now, the land, actually, it looked, from what I can see in the Collier property records that I looked up, the orig, a good portion of that land was a gift back in '96. In 2001, they bought another 20 acres. To cite itself that they're proposing is 60 acres, and I believe the cost of that in 2001 was $640,000. So they did not have land in that $94 million. They also did not have FF and E in that figure. Now, if I use our standard 8% that I just asked for on us, that would equate to another $7.5 million. They think, seem to think, at least what they initiated to me today, was they use FF and E somewhere between 10% to 12%. So in the grand scheme, they also don't have architectural fees in that $94 million. Their fees are proposed to be $5 million. That's twice what we spent on the MMM and bidding the high school design cost. So in the grand scheme of things, $94 million for hard construction, that's all the site fill and what have you, $5 million for architectural, our 8% on their number, conserve at least $7.5 million, plus the land for $640,000. It's $107,160,000. Now, I saw nowhere where I could find mitigation costs or shelter hardening costs. So if you're asking me what I think that school will probably come in at, total project cost, probably $110 million plus. And we're at, with the property that we bought, 1.9, to your 98 approval of total project cost, we're at just over $100 million.
How many student stations in Collier, do you know?
Well, it's confusing. There's two different news articles. If I read the first one, which disclosed the 94, it said 2,000 student stations, approximately 300,000 square feet. A second news article I found out in April's news said somewhere around 2,300 students. So I think their initial impression was 2,000 student stations.
So is the 98 million, then, without, it's that 100 and whatever minus the land that we already owned?
You approved 98 million.
Right.
Did not include the land. Their 94 million doesn't include design fees, doesn't include FF and E, doesn't include any of the ancillary items. Does that make sense?
It does.
I'm just, based on just doing some rough math and comparisons on what we do, they're going to be about $110 million, for what I see as their station reporting, similar-sized school.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Can I ask one other?
Ms. Gittens.
Okay, and I know I'm back on my favorite subject of portables, but I understand that there's a statute or a law or something that after you have a portable for a certain amount of time, then you're required to put a cover over it. And my question is about coverings over some of these portables. It really is an issue at a lot of our schools, because when it rains, you're either, you know, stuck in the portable, or they have kids in different areas throughout the school, and that makes it very difficult when they don't have that much space in the first place. So do you know of a ruling like that, that-
Yeah, that's a code in SREF, State Requirements for Educational Facilities. Any portable that's there for more than three years, meaning when you enter the fourth year, you have to provide covers.
And do we have any of those that are reaching that at this point?
We have. We have. We, prior to the tax revenue issuance that we received, it was a matter of budget and what we could afford. Right now, if I was to go out and put covers on all of the trailer areas that we have, it could be several million dollars.
Is it in the plans to do that anywhere?
No, we actually, it's being discussed now. We're actually going to bring it up at the Capitol Committee to start talking about the potential funding for that.
Okay.
We carry a year-to-year line of about $300,000 or $400,000 for that, but we've typically used that when the budget was so tight for mobilization of trailers and maintenance of existing trailers. So now that, and I don't want to speak for finance, now that maybe we have the halfpenny sales tax, it is part of a safety and an SREF need, that will be something I'm sure they'll be discussing.
Okay, thank you.
I just needed clarification. When you, when Ms. Gittens was saying covers over the portable-
Correct.
Did she mean walkway covers?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, so-
High and dry from when the door, you exit the door in the trailer, all the way to you enter the door in the main building.
Okay, so for instance, that first year that MMM will be open as portables, there won't be covered walkways?
No, there will not. You'll have our, you'll have the standard, which we do everywhere. You'll have a standard eyebrow over the ramp, so when they open the door, the driving rain won't go inside the portable.
Right.
And yes, that's been, that's been done that way as long as I've been here. I'm not saying it's correct. I'm just saying it's, that's been a standard.
I honestly thought, I mean, there's walkways that are-
You'll have concrete.
Like we had them, or they're concrete walkways that are, okay. But, so we've never, with all the rains we get here, the kids are out in the rain among the portables.
That is correct.
Didn't realize that. I was thinking they were covered walkways. Wow. That's not good.
But also understand that whenever you do have a thunderstorm or something like that, they keep them in the classroom, so they don't, you know, there is some common sense that's exercised during rainy season.
Reason for that statute is it's-
I realize that, but I remember having taught at Astero High School, where there's the courtyard, sometimes the kids don't know any better than to come in out of the rain, and we would actually have to get on the PA system and say, there's thunder and lightning, go under the walkways, do not. And then you'd have kids coming in, and these were high school kids, sopping wet, and then they'd want to leave, go to the bathroom, do this, do that. And so, yeah, the rain is a problem, and I can understand when there's thunder and lightning. Obviously, you don't want them out in that, but we have a lot of just rainstorms where-
Well, we're entering a season, a dry season, which is going to end here in about a month, and that's going to carry us through all the way until next June. The law was meant for a reason. If it was a short-term deployment of a portable to support some growth, yes. We did not have the funds to build the schools we needed, so we had to supplement with portables. And the expense of these aluminum canopies is astronomical. People drop their jaws when I tell them what a 50-foot section of bus drop-off canopy costs.
It is expensive, yes.
It's-
Okay. Great. Okay.
Then, we also provided in your backup the update for change order reports. Are there any questions on that?
Just the Ida Baker centralized energy plant. We didn't go through that slide. Are there any questions on that? All kinds of language in there I don't understand. Directional board drilling, no need to explain. There's no questions there. Then the change order memo, any questions on that?
No, I just had a question on, could you please send me just, Scott, who keeps an eye on when the information's coming back, again, about like Franklin Park and Cypress Lake? Because I know we're waiting for the state to-
Correct.
Do whatever. We keep getting updates on all this other stuff. But I know for a fact that I am always getting questioned on where we're at on that, and I keep saying it's in the state's hands. But if we could, who monitors?
Right now, we, planning is following that. We actually, I believe they've committed to a date. I don't know immediately, but I would say it's within the next month, 30 days. The state people are coming down for a walk. So this Friday, myself and Kathy Ebo and Dominic and some others, will be walking Cypress Lake and Franklin Parks again in preparation for that state site visit where they actually walk through, and that's where we sell our cause.
Thank you. That's good to know.
I know, Ms. Jordan, and I had a brief conversation about this, but we're starting up our, the community forums. You know, Ms. Gittens was the first one out in Lehigh. The next one is going to be at Franklin Park, and Ms. Jordan will be hosting that. I will be there as well. But one of the things that we're going to talk about is that, that specific project with community members. So I know Kathy will be there. I don't know if Scott's planning to be there, but we'll have staff there to talk about the project with community members and answer questions.
And the walk-through would have already had happened before us. Before us, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Questions in change order memo?
Question on that one, just really quickly. This is about Ida Baker's energy plant, correct? The whole-
Correct.
How is this fitting into our use of the, you know, online, our tracking of how the money is going for the half cent? Is this something that's included in there?
I do not believe this was part of the halfpenny, the halfpenny sales tax referendum. It was started prior to the approval of that. I would assume that finance, as we get into the next phases, may include that in part of the halfpenny sales tax referendum. We have another phase to go yet. We're just, we're in the completion stage of phase two.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ichtenbacher.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
You too. Next, we have public comment. You don't need to address it unless there's anyone who's wishing to speak, and I only see board employees and our sheriff, who's here to protect us. So moving on to board member comments. I'll start at my right. Ms. Fisher?
I have no comments today.
Ms. Gittens?
I have, one thing I want to mention, the superintendent said in the community forums that we had had one in Lehigh. I would like to suggest with all the updated information and things that are going on, that was in the last school year, and I would like to suggest having one in the Lehigh area, especially with all the building and changes and things that are going on out there. If we could look at adding one.
I can, let me get a copy of where they are currently planned. We had, Dr. Carlin had worked with, I believe, Dr. Chapman and Fred Morgan to establish locations and dates. So provide that to the board and then take that suggestion back. I know that, I think we have a conversation with Mr. Morgan and Dr. Chapman, I believe, next week on a related matter, and I can talk to him about that at that time.
Okay, I would appreciate it. And just a comment that, I'm a little bit confused in one sense, that when thoughts and ideas are brought before this board, there tends to be different methods and acceptance for ideas that are brought forward. And going forward in the future, I would think that we could accept new thoughts or new ideas from anyone on the board at any time. We are a growing, changing district, and if we don't accept or even consider new thoughts and ideas, then we're only as good as the changes that we make. So I would really like the board to consider listening and being open to new ideas or new thoughts about things in the future. And as far as my other comments, I'll hold off on them. Thank you.
The only comment that I have is, I appreciate what you said, Ms. Gittens, but I just know for me personally, if I don't have information before, it just makes me very uncomfortable, because I really want to be informed of what we're going to speak about, and that's just for my own personal, for me. But I do appreciate every thought that you have or anyone else has on this board. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Vaughn?
I have no comments.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, piggybacking on what Ms. Gittens was talking about. I know we've done a good job telling people about the high school MMM meeting, community meeting that's coming up about-
August 29th at Varsity Lakes Middle.
What I don't know is how it's been advertised in the community. I know it's gone out as a press release, but I have had inquiries from activists in the community about their opportunity to provide input, and so I just want to make certain that we're using multimedia outlets to talk about MMM High School and MMM Middle School. The other comment I would like to make, at some future point, I think we need to talk about the conversation that was held at Greater Florida School Boards Consortium about the role of the lobbyist. And I don't know if the school board members who attended came away with the same understanding that I did, but essentially what I heard, the members or the lobbyists for the other districts, the government relations people for the other districts, saying in effect, since we don't have a government relations person, tough luck, that, you know, they're not going to instruct Tom, Sarah, to provide information to us, because their practice is to provide it through that group, that those- is to provide it through that group, that those governmental relationship lobbyists who work as a team with Sarah. And this came up because I tried to bring up the issue of, this was a walk-around to his contract, I was really trying to talk about what's written into his contract as lobbyist, and whether or not he's delivering, from my point of view, what I believe is written into the contract. And essentially, there was a fairly, I think it got fairly heated discussion about the fact that people didn't feel he had a responsibility to provide information to us on a regular basis, and there were other aspects of the contract we didn't talk about. So, you know, we started a conversation this morning, and we've, I think, for good reason, put it off to another workshop, but just to talk about this whole legislative liaison thing. And I would like the board to consider giving our representative to GFSBA a directive to tackle this whole business of the contract and what the role is, because I was, frankly, I was offended, and I don't know if the others who attended were, but so I'm just, that's my comment this afternoon on GFSBA.
Okay, so coming out of FSBA is, I got to do something super fun last night, I got an email telling me that we had to have a call this morning about notice for public rulemaking for the FCC, and Mr. Davis and I discussed this super briefly this morning. So they're proposing making changes to the Universal Service Fund, and that provides money for four different things. The one that we care about is schools and libraries, so it allows us to get access to the internet at discounted rates through the E-rate, is that, did I get that right? And they're looking at putting a cap, so instead of looking at each of these four funds differently, they're looking at putting a cap on the overall, on all four funds, and looking at them as one fund. So instead of four separate funds, they're looking at one fund. I don't, I don't see any initial negative impact on education, because it looks like last year, funding actually exceeded demand by $1.29 billion. So as I read through the notice, I just got the feeling that this is a government that's trying to cut back. This is a government that's trying to cut waste where they can, and if you have funding that exceeds demand by $1.29 billion, that's a little bit of fat that you can cut. All of that being said, the FSBA was a little bit disappointed with the representation by the NSBA, the National School Boards Association, because I'm sure Attorney Saunders can speak to the fact that when you make a comment to a potential public role through an agency, you have to be specific. They asked for specific comments on specific topics, and this was more like a letter to the editor that had been written by the NSBA. It was very general, like, his eyebrow just went up. It was, it was very general, and their explanation is that they did that because they want to share it publicly, and the public will be able to understand that better. But anyways, I just wanted you all to know that that was an issue, and it was really, really fun. It brought me back to the days when I used to have to read laws and stuff. And then, I, two more things I want to talk about. We were so excited two weeks ago for the first day of school, right? And there's no excitement anymore, and I just want to point out that what we did that first day, we did today, and we'll do tomorrow, and we'll do on Day 160, and we'll do on Day 180 as well. So I just, I think it's wonderful that we have excitement about the first day of school, but I think it's also important for us to understand and recognize the teachers and the bus drivers and the parents and everybody that do that every single day, and don't get the recognition that they get on that first day. And finally, I do have to mention how proud I am of the superintendent and his team for the way that they handled the referee issue that we had. I think that the integrity and ethics and just the overall transparency with the way you handled that, it made me very proud to be associated with the district. And I know that you're going to say it was a team effort, and I understand, because I know the people that worked on it on your team, but you set the tone when it comes to something like that. So thank you for the way you handled that, and those are my comments. Attorney Saunders, do you have any comments?
No, I wish.
Dr. Atkins?
No comments.
Excellent. Seeing no other comments, we are adjourned.